I'd like to welcome everyone to our regular council meeting and work session of February 7. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? And let's remember all of those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wendy Raltma, please.
Mr. Johnson. Ms. Figueroa.
Here.
Mr. Pezz.
Here.
Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Gorman, present. Mr. Trechus, present. Mr. Giuseppe.
Here.
So you know Betty's mom's broke her ankle. She can't get around. She's been in a bed for six weeks now. Betty's putting a lot of time into trying to help her and wants her some tough times. So I know that's why she's not here this evening. Okay. Joe, before we, why don't you, you want to do the two officers and then I got some other things to do and then come back to you, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Before we get started, I was in a, we were in executive session discussing personnel and some litigation. And that's why we're getting started a little bit late tonight. So at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Sergeant Morse, who wants to bring up a couple of our newly hired part-time police officers.
As everybody knows, we started the process of hiring part-time officers back in late November.
You have a microphone over there?
Yeah, that's it.
Yep. Back in late November, and it was a lengthy process under the new rules of Act 57 from the Mopec and the state police. But here tonight, I have two of the officers. We have hired three and they started the FTO program here in Bristol Borough. One of the officers couldn't make it tonight due to a death in her family, but she will be here next month to introduce all of you. So tonight, I'd like to call up Devin Gonzalez first.
Can I come up here?
I'm fine here.
Okay.
That's good. So Devin is a Bucks County resident. He's from here in Bristol Borough. He's a native of Bristol Borough, his family's here. Devin graduated from Bristol High School. He attended Indiana University of PA to study criminology. Devin then studied abroad in Chile. He attended a leadership program in Bowling Green, Ohio. After that, Devin enrolled in the Indiana University of PA Police Academy in Pennsylvania, where he received his Act 120 training certificate to be a police officer here in Bristol Borough. And as of right now, Devin has completed all of his training and updates to start being a police officer in Pennsylvania. And he is in the FTO program now. He started two weeks ago here in Bristol Borough. So I'm looking forward to having him train and be a part of it.
Say anything?
Wait a second. Wait, wait, wait. Take this. It's a microphone. Sorry.
I just want to say thank you to everyone. And thank you to Sergeant Morse, who's helped me through the process. And it's an honor to work in my hometown. And I hope to never let anyone down and do a good job. Cool.
I called Devin. It was an honor to have him on our police department.
Want to call Matthew Sosio. Matthew also went through the process of Act 57 requirements of Mopec and the state police here and has been in training for the past two weeks. He's also a Bucks County resident, attended high school at the Hun School of Princeton. After graduating high school, he attended Penn State University, where he achieved his bachelor's of science degree in administration of justice and a minor in sociology. After college, Devin attended the Temple University Police Academy and graduated with his Act 120 certification, making him eligible to be a police officer here in Pennsylvania. Devin has also completed all of his updates and training and is ready to go and is in the FTO program here now for the past two weeks.
Thank, thanks to everybody. I'm excited to be here, excited to get started, excited to, you know, start my career as a police officer. We are. Penn State.
A smile on Greg's face, Penn State.
Before they leave, I was handed a letter late this afternoon. I thought it would be appropriate to read it, not only to all of you and the public, but to two new officers, because it meant a lot to me about one of my officers downstairs. So if I could take a second to read it, is that okay?
Thank you for your time.
So this was handed to me this afternoon, and it goes, "With all the hate and negative news that police officers receive, I would like to personally thank one. On Friday, February 4th, my mom passed away at home, and Officer Sergeant Hankinson responded to the call. When he arrived, he showed nothing but complete compassion to myself and my mother. He went above and beyond to call the funeral home and her family physician and notify them of her passing. He showed kindness and empathy to the family and friends that were present. Before leaving, Officer Hankinson said, 'If you need anything else, don't hesitate to call.' I will always remember his kindness. Thank you again, Sergeant Hankinson."
Wow, that's great.
"...for your compassionate nature. Kevin McCarthy." Thank you.
That's not the first time I heard a lot of positive feedback from Sergeant Hankinson.
Yes.
I could tell you, a lot of people respect him and a lot of people know he does all of a job for this borough.
And I agree.
Now, you two guys got to go to work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Instead of holding you guys up, we're going to change gears and we'll go to the AOC. Who wants to make a presentation or?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will introduce myself, although people here know who I am. Mike Girard, I'm the president of the Bristol Alumni and Athletic Association, but I'm also a member of the AOC. And with me is Ron Sherrett. Ron Sherrett is also our treasurer for the BAA and is also a member of the AOC. And we've been asked just to say a few words on, on behalf of both of those nonprofits that work out of the borough here tonight. The first is the Academic Oversight Committee. And believe me, we thank you for giving us this time to get the word out about some of the things that the AOC has done in the past and continues to do. Ron and I, it's safe to say, are not the prime movers of the AOC. And they would be names that would be familiar to you. That would be Gene Williams and Amy McElvein and Mary Giswoldy. There are many folks involved in the AOC in different capacities. One of them happens to be the mayor of the town. And so, but we draw from a lot of different people with different skills. AOC's basic job is to go beyond the school's budget and with full cooperation and collaboration with the school district and with, with borough council, we try to move the school district in the borough forward. The mission is to serve and support the educational community, to focus on the individual student. There are a number of goals to support this mission. One is that we need to raise funds, and I'll talk about that in just a second. We want to instill in youth the history and pride of the borough and to foster student volunteerism. And we're here tonight to kind of reinforce one of our other goals. And that is to main, to maintain awareness to residents and supporters of the group what we try to do in terms of promoting academic and social growth in both our public and parochial schools through program participation. And if anyone would like to help us in terms of membership, please contact us and you can reach us through the school district offices. The AOC has a slide presentation for you, and I'll try to just hit the, the main points. Having spent a little bit of time in the classroom, I know the worst thing that you can do is put up a slide and then read it to everyone. And the positioning is a little awkward for, for the council, but I'll just move right through the slides. And Matt tells me that this should be rather easy. Although you're talking to someone who used an overhead projector for 40 years in the classroom, so. Okay, so there's our, you know, we're helping borough students learn to live and lead. Just this fall, we've, you know, had extracurricular programs and activities bolstered by summer camps. And there you can see our financing came from a 21st Century Grant, the Borough Council, and the AOC itself. There was just a presentation at the Bristol Riverside Theater for Art Regis. And, and look at the, the students that were involved, grades one and two. And the, the AOC members that could see it said that it was, it was phenomenal. And we heard from the school district as well. And the AOC made a $7,000 commitment for Art Regis. And that's going to continue throughout the school year. There's, are also tutoring and academic support programs for the kids in the elementary school, at Bristol Middle School, Bristol High School. And they go through the guidance office for some credit recovery classes. Other 2021 AOC-funded programs, a Microsoft certification program. And there you can see the figures in green of what the AOC has placed in these programs. Makerspace, again, with the AOC and what that was involved. And Leapfrog at St. Mark's School for pre-K to fourth, fourth grade students. STEM is such an important part, you know, science, technology is so important. We went through these and noticed that they start in kindergarten, move all the way through fifth and sixth grade. If you press me on what some of those programs are, you would have to get someone else from the AOC to explain Ozobots and Spirobots. But we've seen some of the kids and they've been absolutely ecstatic about these programs. And Matt tells me that these were supposed to be movies. Unfortunately, the program here doesn't support that, but the kids are very involved and that young man is doing Ozobots. In terms of updates, we formed a working partnership with the Borough Recreation Program. We are developing a Fire Cadet EMS high school curriculum. We're pursuing a medical arts program in conjunction with the Community College. And we continue to honor Bristol Borough School District faculties and the support staffs for their service during the pandemic. And we're investigating some kind of swimming program for the district at grade three. We do get some help from our friends. And I said, one of the, our missions is that we need to raise money to support these programs. We had a successful no-go raffle last year. The winners were Amy McElvein. And as I said at the, the meeting the other night, we're looking into why Amy McElvein is one of the winners. Matt Beern and Ginny O'Donnell. And we thank everyone for their support. There is community fundraising and support is critical. And there are some tentative dates for our other fundraisers. Jazz on the River, Friday, June 24th, and the Bristol Fall Classic, Saturday, November 19th. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the large role that the King George Inn plays in supporting those two events. And they've been more than generous with their help towards us. Okay. So anyone who has any questions, we'll try to field them.
Okay.
Well, can I just, we'll introduce the, the next part. If there's, there's nothing else on the AOC, we wanted to also talk about the Bristol Alumni and Athletic Association as well. We don't have anything as fancy as that, but I did put a handout on, on everyone's desk, which is just a, a basic fact sheet. If you look at some of the names that are involved in the executive committee, they are very familiar names in the borough. And really, what we've done is, is we've gone back since 2004. The founders of the BAA are familiar to people in the borough. Jim Satilli, Bob Libitor, and Frank Barbetta. And I have to put my friend Toby Oriolo in there as well, who was secretary for many, many years. Our purpose is twofold. It's to provide social gatherings and activities for association's members to promote the pride and traditions of Bristol Athletics. And we too are a cooperative group and we work with the district very closely. We also are involved in providing grants to coaches, to advisors, to teachers, and to students, and also scholarship money to graduating seniors. And at this point, we have given away in the neighborhood of $170,000 in terms of supporting all those missions. We do have a number of activities. We have, we try to get in, three general membership meetings. We hold those in the borough. And we've been everywhere from the Grundy Library and Museum to the Dad's Hat Distillery, to the Borough Pub, to the Hibernians.
We can find a room, right?
To, to the school district, yes. We, we move around the borough. And we try to support as best we can. We've had dinners at, at Caesar's. We've had dinners at the King George, because they are big supporters of, of the programs that we are involved in. We hope to have our next general membership meeting sometime in March. We've been postponing this. We really haven't had one in two years, simply because the pandemic has, has shut us down for that. Ron will talk a little bit about our, our big fundraiser, which is the annual golf classic. But in terms of membership, we invite everyone to join. It is not an exclusionary group. You do not, even though the name says Bristol Alumni and Athletic Association, you don't have to be a resident of the borough. You don't have to be a graduate of Bristol High School. Bishop Egan, class of 1967, standing before you. You don't have to be particularly athletic. You don't have to be athletic at all. If you have a pulse, you're our person. If you want to get involved and you want to come out and help the kids in, in the borough. In, in terms of, in addition to our three membership meetings, we try to attend a Trenton Thunder game. We help to subsidize the cost of those tickets. It's a fun night, especially, we're looking forward to it this year. We're going in June. And the name of the manager is somebody called Jeff Manto. So, you know, we, we hope to, and Jeff is trying to get to be our guest speaker at the, our March membership meeting. So we hope that that comes off. The other part is our annual golf classic, which is our big fundraiser. We've been at Bristol Day as well. But I'll let Ron talk a little bit more about the finances and also about our golf classic.
Okay. Very simply, I'm a numbers guy, so that's the best way to explain. In scholarships, and I'm just going to go across the line. Since we started in 2005 and actually giving things out, our total scholarships that we have given out is $93,850 that we've given out in scholarships. Usually in the vicinity of six, well, we've increased it recently over $6,000 a year. But it has been at least $3,000 all the way through. And given, and money that we have given to the athletic programs, that is almost at $31,000 that we have given to the various programs, the men and the women's programs that we've given out. As far as school organizations, because we also, we just don't do athletics, we also give to the classroom teachers, that's over $14,000 that we have given them. That's school organizations, I'm sorry. That was the different programs, the teachers themselves, the classroom teachers, it's almost $25,000. So that's where we get, our total right now is about $170,000 that we have given out. And the thing is, we are a small organization as far as membership and people that count that are actually, you know, attend meetings and so forth. And most of our income comes from one thing. We run a golf outing every year. Last year, our golf classic, we brought in $11,596. And that's pretty much covering everything that we do. So most of it comes from, and we got a lot of great sponsors from the borough who give their, you know, their $500 or $200 as sponsors. So we're pretty proud. I've been with it since day one, since actually 2003, when we first had our, our first meeting. And it's, it's amazing what we've been able to accomplish without a lot of, you know, assets. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
If anyone has a question or two, we'd be glad to answer anything that.
I just got a couple of statements I can make. First of all, I want to thank you guys for all the hard work and dedication that you put into these organizations. It's not easy. And like you said, it's, you know, money's always an issue trying to raise money for everything. So again, I appreciate all you do for the people of this town. I got a good fundraiser for you if you want. Ron's wife makes excellent pies. She brings them to me and I eat the whole pie. Mike, if you need somebody to raise money, let her make a couple pies. You can auction them off. She's very good.
Really? I have not tasted any of her pies, so, you know.
Ralph ate all we had.
Ate them all. But no, all kidding aside, you guys do a great job. And so does the AOC, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And if there's anything you need from this council or you need a place to meet, you're welcome to use our room anytime. Just notify the manager and we have a community room back here. You're welcome to use.
In fact, we have. Harold Mitchener gave a, a historical overview of Borough Council and Borough Hall. And that was a well-attended meeting. You know, we had about 33, 35 people. And it was well-done. He always does everything well.
He's so knowledgeable.
And, and it was nice to hear about this, this building in my hometown. So I'm, I'm glad.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you.
All right, Joe, we're going back to you.
We're going to do the co-responder program.
You're in charge.
Great. So, so the co-responder program.
Thank you. Thank you. Block grant. The Bucks County Human Service Division has partnered with multiple police departments in Bucks County with a couple of social workers assigned to the police agencies in the lower end of the county. We would be partnered with not only the Human Service Division, but we would be partnered with the Bristol Township Police Department and the Tellytown Borough Police Department. So it would be them three police departments with us, or two with us, making three. The purpose of this program would be to decrease the time the police department spends responding to situations involving social service needs. So in a nutshell, we would, the police department would respond to these situations. And then it would be up to the officers or the sergeant that's on duty to assess this situation. And if we felt like it was a need, we would call and have the co-responder team assigned to us respond to that situation. Not only would they respond to that situation, but their job would be to assess that situation at the time, if there's some things that we could do at that time to de-escalate or help that situation out. They, along with the officers on scene, would do that. Part of their job would be to follow up on that issue that day and to use their resources available to them to assist the people that, or the individuals that were involved in that situation that day. Providing a more effective response with their resources is, is one of their jobs. Diverting individuals with social service needs from further penetration into the criminal justice system is another important job of theirs. So for an example, instead of us having to escalate a situation with men, with somebody with mental health issues, we could call them to de-escalate that situation so that we don't have to make an arrest, take the person in front of a judge and send them up to prison. They can go to a place with their resources for the help that that individual needs. And some of these situations, which would include the, the escalation part, the assessment part, the intervention part, destabilizing the scene would be like crisis intervention situations, suicidal, bizarre behavior, mental illness, domestic situations, runaways, aging adults that may need some assistance, traumatic events, and drug and alcohol situations with people that would like to get some help, just don't know how to get their resources. We could call them in and they can assist them, individuals. The two co-responders would be based out of the Bristol Township Police Department. It would be their home base. When we needed them, we would call for them and they would respond Monday through Friday. Basically, that's it in a nutshell. I mean, there's a lot of little things that you have in, there's a whole program in your packet. I would be more than willing at any time to sit down with anybody. Call me if you have a question on what you read. But that, that's the program. They would not be patrolling with us. They would not be going into situations and putting them into harm. We would deal with that situation first and then have them respond once it was calmed down.
Do I have any questions for Joe regarding the program? So you know, this is a program that Commissioner Marsaglia is really out there on the forefront pushing this program. And when she contacted me, it has to be at least eight, nine months ago regarding this program. If we would look at it, and I had the manager involved and I had our former chief involved and the mayor, everybody got involved in this. And we, we all think it's a great program. I think Joe's been involved now and has taken the, the lead on this. And we told him to give us his opinion. And he feels it's, the program's the way to go. Financially, we got to see what happens after two years with the salaries are going to be and everything. But the county also said in a couple of years, they'd be even have more funding for this. So it's going to be divided up between the three municipalities and there'll be shares. So it's not like it's an equal cut. It'll be, right, Mr. Don?
If it goes beyond two years, the municipalities have to pay for what we've.
We threw out the idea that should be based on population.
Population, right.
So, you know, the borough's population to the whole Tullytown and Bristol Township is 14.8%. So, estimated costs with today's rates would be $27,000 a year to the borough, so.
I mean, even if it's a little bit more, I think the program is well worth it. I think, like Joe said, you could call the social workers in and deal with some stuff. And Brian had said earlier, which none of us even thought about, was how about if somebody's parent died from COVID, would this fall into that situation? And the answer is yes. So, I mean, it shows you that there's a lot that this program could cover. So, I think it's, it's well worth it. I think we're moving in the right direction and I want to thank Commissioner Marsaglia for pushing this program.
Just one note real quick, is I just want everybody to know that 99% of our department has CIT training downstairs, which is crisis intervention training, which is excellent. The new officers, as soon as the class happens, is scheduled in Bucks County, the new officers will also get trained in that, so.
Okay. Joe?
I just wanted to say that I know the amount of time that Joe has put in on being involved in this and getting up to speed. It also puts us right in the forefront that is going across America today. You know, everybody's hollering about getting the police out of being, you know, in that type of business and dealing with people with mental health. And this is that program that, you know, will lead us into that process. So, I'm happy that, you know, council as a whole has said that they want to participate in this. And I think over the next two years, we'll find out going forward.
What else you have?
Um...
Joe, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Why don't you update everybody on the tasers?
Okay.
What's going on with the taser program? Since Joe took over, he's got a lot, a lot of...
I have to give a lot of credit.
A lot of things that fell in your lap, Joe. I'll tell you what, we give you a lot of credit for how you stepped up in taking the bull by the horn.
You know, I love this town, so it's an honor, believe me. So, we have a contract with Axon Taser. The contract is expiring very soon, actually the end of the month for our tasers. It's a five-year contract. Without the contract, there become some issues of warranty and some of the support that they offer. So, they reached out to me to let me know that the contract was expiring and after speaking with several of their representatives and going back and forth, we came up with a plan to trade in the 18 tasers that will be expiring, receive 18 new TASER sevens, the docking stations, the training cartridges, the patrol cartridges. I also, we got them to include the training of Detective Davis as the instructor, which we, he will be attending in March and he will come back and then certify all the officers in Bristol Borough with the new tasers. The delivery, if, if this passes tonight and I email her tomorrow to let her know that it passed, the delivery, we're looking at sometime in April or May because of the supply chain, but they will cover the warranty of the old ones because that is their issue, not our issue. We will be covered until we take possession of the new ones. So, that was a nice thing that even though they're going to expire, we'll still have the, the contract will stay in place until the new ones are delivered to us. And that's really about it? Does anybody have any questions?
That's a key issue.
Part of it.
That's a key issue about having the tasers and having them trained all across the country. You know, you hear these lawsuits about, you know, the officer wasn't trained or the insurance, you know, they dropped their insurance coverage. Joe's worked very hard in making sure that we have coverage during this gap period of when they expire, plus the fact that our TASER trainer has left and he's secured training for our detective so that, you know, we don't lose any continuity. It also saves a lot of money.
So, just so council knows, year one, it's $4,900. Year two, three, four, and five, it's $10,567 a year. So, it's...
$28,000.
$48,000.
Yes.
But hopefully next year, we could apply for some casino grant money. Maybe we'll be successful through the RDA.
Please.
Again, I mean, you had a lot, a lot of work to do to try to get this onboard as quick as you did. It took a lot of time, but if you didn't discover this, I mean, we would have been out of...
The contract.
Contract with this company and we could have a problem. So, again, thanks for staying on top of that. The other thing is while we're on police, the AOC vehicle, Sergeant Morris went out to onboard.
I think Lou had a question for me about the tasers.
About the tasers?
Sorry.
I know they talked about the charging station. Do all our officers leave the tasers here? Or do they take them home with them?
Tasers are left at the station with their equipment.
I just didn't know, because with the part-timers, I didn't know, would somebody wasn't here, you know, didn't come in for a while?
No, everything's left here and actually the new tasers are a little bit different. They're a double cartridge and they come, we will have charging stations. If you were to come down into the police department, you'll see like battery charging stations with the batteries. So, there'll always be a fresh battery for an officer to come into for the TASER.
Any questions on the tasers?
Thank you.
All right. So, the AOC vehicle needed to be replaced. So, instead of us just going and buy one, Joe, Sergeant Morris went to visit, I think, a couple of other municipalities and see what they do and we decided, he made a recommendation on a different vehicle. So, why don't you explain what we're doing?
So, the, the old ACO truck, which is a Ford Ranger, has got a lot of miles on it. It's starting to cause, it's breaking down and we definitely need to have an ACO here in Bristol Borough with the amount of calls that come in on a daily basis for an animal control officers. So, because of the supply chain and the availability of vehicles that we've been running into, just I know through the police cars, we, we looked at several different trucks and then I went up and I looked at a couple of different police departments and I wind up, up in Middletown Township where they have a Ford Transit Connect, it's called. It's a small little minivan you might see people driving around delivering flowers and stuff. And they had that set up. So, I looked at their setup, I reviewed their setup, I got the specs on their setup and then the, the specs for the equipment, for the cage and the equipment that the ACO needs. And I like the idea of the van because after looking at their van and seeing how it's equipped, you can, you can bring the animals in from the back. There's a, there's a slide mat where it's, and the van sits much lower, so if you have an elderly animal or an animal that might be sick or a large animal, you could get it to that mat and then it would slide in. And then it also offers a side door entrance so that the cage that'll be inside, I think I, you guys had the picture. The cage that'll be inside will have access to the rear and the front. So, the front will have, will also have a mat if, if you have a large dog or an injured dog or a cage or anything for that matter that's large. It's even lower on the side and you can get that animal up and into that side of the cage. So, you have the picture there. If you have any questions on the pictures, I'd be more than happy to answer the questions. I think it's an all-around good vehicle for us.
One of the questions I had was the pickup truck you could hose down. And I said to Joe, what happens if, you know, the dog messes or whatever? They got pads, some kind of a pad and you just pull the pad out, throw it away and, and that's, it's that easy. You don't have to worry about it hosing it down. As far as the finances, because I know everybody always wants to know where we're getting the money, we're probably going to take some of this money out of our capital improvement and some out of the budget. And the vehicle's being purchased through our CoStar bid process, so there is no bid. This was, the state of Pennsylvania decides who's the lowest bid and that's where we're going to get the truck.
And just so you know, I simplified the equipment like they did. There's no drilling into the van or no, all kinds of mounting equipment. It's basically the cage is going to come with the straps. We'll put the cage in, strap the sides down nice and tight and you have the access and the mats and the pads. And that was it.
Now, if you have to clean it, you take it out and you hose everything down.
Yeah, you can take it out and hose it from, from the front, just spray everything out the back.
Spray everything right out. Any questions on the truck? Okay. What else you have, Joe?
I just wanted to just say that in the month of January, we had two initiatives, one on Route 13. We had a traffic safety initiative out there because of the issues that we've had out there, the tragic issues we've had. I assigned officers out there for the month, multiple days during the week at multiple times, mostly the evening times. And what we did was we went out there and we did some traffic control, made some vehicle stops for violations, but we also came across people that were crossing in the dark areas and the areas where there's no crosswalks and we had conversations with them and explained to them the importance of using the crosswalks and explained the crosswalks to them to try to avoid any more of these tragic accidents out there with people crossing in the dark areas where the people driving down 13 just don't see you. We have great access at our intersections, access controls, we have great crosswalks. Everything is, is set up perfectly if you use that. So, that's what we did with Route 13 for the month of January. And then also the stop signs, I've been getting a lot of complaints about the stop signs in town, all over town, everybody here knows. So, we went out, we've been going out in January and we've been doing some stop sign enforcement, some warnings, some tickets have been issued and we're going to continue both of them initiatives through February, maybe into March and see how it goes. And I'll report back to you at the next council meeting.
Any questions for Joe?
There was an article in the Courier today about the, all the accidents on 13 and they have some planning.
Was that today?
It was in today's newspaper. Do they invite you guys into? I think it's like PennDOT's looking into making some changes. To me, one of the things is, and I know everybody's going to hate me for this, but we allow right-hand turns on, from Bath Street to Route 13 and that's where a couple of people have gotten, right, gotten killed there because, you know, sometimes you're, you're looking the other way to see if any cars are coming and you're scooting by and some of these people are just a little off the, you know, out of the, the light there. So, I don't, I don't know if that's...
I can tell you, they had reached out to me a few weeks ago, the Courier Times, and once, once we got through the COVID situation downstairs, I had them come down, the reporter, and I took them out and showed them the intersections that our municipality covers along Route 13 and I explained to him and went over and we sat and watched multiple intersections, how the, how the crosswalk works. You push the button, the hand shows you to stop or to move forward. We went over the whole thing. So, I knew that there was an article coming, I just wasn't sure when.
And at Second Avenue, there's, there's nothing there, right? There's a crosswalk, but...
There's a crosswalk with a button that you push and when you push that button, there's lights over top of 13 that flash yellow.
Flash yellow? Okay, they, they aren't working.
They work, but they don't work per se. No, nobody stops. I don't think people realize what it is because it's just, you're on top of it before you even realize it.
And don't forget, we, this council tried to get that to become a red light.
Yes.
But PennDOT declined to put the red light in, so, you know, we fought, we tried the best we can to get that put in.
Well, a couple of more people have been killed, so maybe it's time we go back to PennDOT. That's what they gauged their, some of their, some of their decisions on.
Right.
Joe, what about, because, you know, because Route 13 is a state road, right? What about the state police with, with speed enforcement in general? I know that's not the most popular topic sometimes with, you know, with our local residents, but, and I'm, I'm not saying that speeding itself is necessarily the issue, you would know better than I, but I just think the bigger, the bolder the presence, the more people get educated on how dangerous that place is. Have you had any contact with the state police?
I do talk to the state police because they do wander into the area and they do do some traffic initiatives in our area along 13 and sometimes up on Rackliff Street and stuff. So, they know about it. I just don't know what their manpower issue is, but what I can tell you is these three part-timers are going to be trained and they're going to be ready to go by the warm weather and that is going to be one of our initiatives, along with the stop signs and the speeding in certain parts of town.
You guys have, but are you even allowed to have, yes, I truly don't know, are you even allowed to have speed traps on 13 even with the clicker since it's a state road?
Clickers for all the new part-timers.
But I'm saying, you're allowed, you're allowed to enforce that on a state road.
We have the lines right at 13th and Corson Street.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
I think I'm done, unless anybody has anything for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, do you have anything you want? Eric, do you have anything for Joe or?
Do I have anything for him?
Anything you want to bring up?
Yeah, a couple.
Go ahead.
Um, excuse me. Thank you for an excellent report.
Thank you.
For year-end, we ended up at 11,100 calls for service for the year, which was around 900 per month. So, you heard all the, the wonderful things that we're trying to get done downstairs. There's a lot of things that have hit that Sergeant Morris has jumped right on. We've met a couple of times and we've discussed the various initiatives he'd like to do. We put some of them into, into play. The hiring process for the part-timers went really well. We had the, Joe interviewed people and he had the sergeants interview and then Joe and I interviewed the part-timers. So, we got a pretty good mix of, you know, people asking questions. Hopefully that we'll be able to move forward on the tasers and the van for the animal control officer. By the way, he had 687 calls last year for animal control. And last but not least, I know we, we have a lot of things coming up in March and April. I'm happy to report that the fire departments have moved ahead on the, on the merger. They just recently, this past weekend, met and they adopted the bylaws for the Fire Association, which is the first major step in the, the state was, was the volunteer fire, to form an association. They elected an executive board, President Steve Reeves from Consolidated, Vice President Anthony Malave from Gold Hose Company, Treasurer Fran Huffnell from Bristol Fire Company and Paul McManaman, America Hose Hook and Ladder Company. Trying to put together a presentation to do to Borough Council. I'd hope we have it done by March. I think we're going to have to bump it back to April. But what it would be, would be that the association would come forward, explain to you about what they've done. I don't know if I sent it to Jim or not, the, the association's bylaws. I may not, I'll, I'll get something to send it to so council could have it. But that's, that's a little step in everything, but it's a big step, as everybody in here knows how long we've been trying to get this accomplished, so.
Well, I know your hard work has a lot to do with it.
Well, it's, it's, it's a challenge that, you know, we have to provide police service, we have to provide emergency service, we also have to provide fire service, you know, in the town to the residents. So, I just wanted to let you know that they've passed all that and approved it, each individual company has approved it. You know, the next big task is going to be council looking at the ordinance for Chapter 7 for the fire company, but that's where the bylaws will come in a lot. And then also too, also the sitting down and finally making a determination of how we're going to fund all this. of how we're going to fund all this and how that's going to work.
All right.
And I, I think that's a two-year process. I thought this was going to be a year, and we've, we've got it done basically in six months.
Good.
So, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, one more thing. You're going to move somebody into the sergeant. You want to talk about moving?
Oh, yeah. I believe by contract, if somebody is serving in a vacant position for 90 days in the police department, we have Sergeant Morris, who is serving in the chief's position. So we don't have another sergeant. So by contract, we need to move a sergeant up. We do it by seniority. That would be Chuckie Palmer.
So...
Recommend to council that we move him up into that position, which is Joe's position.
So, so Chuckie's going to move as acting sergeant until there is a chief's position. And if Joe doesn't get the chief's position, then Joe will go back to sergeant, and Chuckie will go back to patrol. So just so everybody's clear on what's going on. But I think Chuckie will do a good job. He's, not only has he got the most seniority, he's a good cop.
Absolutely.
I think, you know, first of all, it's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you.
Anything else for Sergeant Morris before we move on? I think that took longer than...
Told you, I'm sorry.
It took an hour. I'm only kidding.
Toronto brick.
All right, I got, just let me go through a couple of things. One, Kurt and Amanda's here. If they can just bring us up to date on two things. One is the Wharf project, because we're having issues. I don't know if anybody's aware that there's a sinkhole at the Wharf. And we finally had people that can go down and dive. They finally went down and dived, and I think they discovered what the issue is. I don't know if you want to go to the podium, Amanda? And the other thing while we're here, maybe you could bring us up to date, or Kurt, on the Mill Street parking lot, the repaving job?
Sure.
Where we're at with that whole project.
Sure. Yeah, as Mr. Giuseppe mentioned, from the July storm last summer, there was, you know, basically a sinkhole that was created right at the end of the Wharf by the sheet piles. So we did have, the borough had a dive team actually go out a few weeks ago and inspect the sheet piling on the outside face of that Wharf area. So they did find a few gaps and voids that they did recommend we fill in, most likely with epoxy. So I think Mr. Dillon's waiting on a proposal from that, that team to see if we can move forward with this. So hopefully it does fix the issue. It does sound like at this point it may be kind of a trial and everything for a little bit to see if it happens again in the future. But should be positive to, to be able to fix that situation there.
We're hoping.
Yeah. And then as far as the parking lot project, I'm sure everybody has driven down there and seen it. Thank you all for your patience. We knew this would be a challenging project a little bit, but hopefully we're kind of coming to, to the end of the, the most difficult parts of it. So part of the, the situation down there was a 20-inch Aqua main that had to be relocated as part of the project where we were replacing the stormwater piping down there. So Aqua finished, finished their work last week. So Miko is the contractor doing the work. They should be coming back, starting again tomorrow, to finish up the storm pipe replacements in the parking lot. And then hopefully, once the weather breaks, kind of we get a couple of nice days, they can come back out and replace some of the curbing in the parking lot. The, there's a few curb ramps, ADA compliant curb ramps they'll be installing as well. And then ultimately repave the entire parking lot. So hopefully some of the disturbances are to a minimum now, and we can have a really nice parking lot after this.
So just so everyone knows, the pipe work that Amanda mentioned is going in because we didn't want to spend all this money and put, we have some play. We had to cut open the parking lot. But it's not going to, if everybody thinks what we're doing is going to solve this flooding problem, you can never stop the flooding. When the river rises, it's just, comes up so high, it's going to flood the parking lot. We're going to have storm drains, we're going to have better pipes. We got new flaps. There's flaps from the pressure from the parking lot pushes these flaps open. The water goes out, and when the water recedes, the flap closes. Sometimes there can be a stick or some kind of big thing that floats down that, you know, wedges it open. But we now have manholes that we could go down and try to get some of this stuff resolved. So I don't want anybody to think, oh, they, you know, first of all, we didn't spend any money. It was a grant that, you know, we were successful in getting a million dollars to do this parking lot. And if you look at number eight on the agenda, there's an electrical panel down there that controls all the lighting in the parking lot. When we were looking at, Aqua had this main to see if there was some broken wires and some things down there that had to be fixed. We looked at upgrading this panel because it's all rusted out and it's not going to last much longer. So I don't know that the company that we had down there recommended that we change this panel and upgrade. And now's the time to do it while the parking lot is, is being done. They're also going to give us a proposal for, it's like a continuity where you make sure everything, there's no breaks in any of the wires. So they're going to test everything down there before we blacktop to make sure if they have to dig down and change something, they can. We met out there the other day with them and walked some of the, the area, the parking lot. We also talked to them about, there's a transformer at the end of, I think it's Cedar. If you come down the hill, it's Cedar. There's a transformer there about our guys maybe putting conduit in from that transformer. It's a three-phase transformer, bring it over to where the duop is and setting a transformer. Pico would set the transformer and the electric. We would have to do the conduit. So it's something we're exploring. And it'll also bring power to down there, to Harriet Tubman Monument and going that way. So we're looking at it. I mean, why not try, if we could do something now before they pave, let's, let's get it done. And something our guys can do, running conduit. So, you know, we're looking at all, all options. So just, we'll update you. Hopefully by March's meeting, we should know exactly what we're doing.
And now's certainly the time to do any sort of improvements down there, especially before we get into, you know, festival season and as, you know, the summer definitely gets busy down there, so.
Yeah, it's going to be, I mean, the parking lot's going to be beautiful. It was destroyed. The outer lane against the marsh, I mean, it was, there wasn't hardly anything left to it. So hopefully everything works out. And do you want to talk about this grant, Jim?
I just have a, an application we need to file. So it's a resolution requesting council to adopt, just authorizing the filing of grant applications. One deal for Maple Beach, the bridge, which is $700,000. One deals with the damage to that property on Cedar Street, 1198 Cedar Street, trying to fix the bank area. And then trying to get $55,000 for Green Lane Flood Study. So it's just requesting council to adopt that resolution, authorizing filing these applications. The only other thing I'd like to add is item eight, I've touched on it. Would you put a period at the end of the 38 cents? Additional item still being evaluated. So we're trying to see if we can do it in another manner. So that was an additional proposal, but we're not ready to make that recommendation. So it would just be for the, the lighting panel at the Mill Street parking lot in the amount of $24,059.38, period.
Also, if you noticed on Prospect Street, they started doing some of the work on the train station. If you go by there, it's plywood up. So that's some of the things that, when we met out there, that we're trying to get the station redone, but they had to do some infrastructure first, where the cement had to take out sections and they're going to reinforce it. So that project is moving along, you know, pretty good too. So hopefully, you know, over the summer or fall, we have a really nice looking new train station with a couple of platforms and things like that. Look, we're doing everything we can to keep moving things along and doing the best we can. So last couple, the police chief job, we discussed an executive session tonight. We're going to start the process of reviewing applications on Thursday at 4:00 PM. So council's going to have an executive session with the mayor Thursday at 4:00 PM. We're going to take all the applications that we have.
When's that next?
Next Thursday.
The 17th.
17th. Take all the applications. We're going to look at it. We're going to try to narrow it down to X amount of applicants. And then we're going to start the process, hopefully with another week or two after that, of the actual interview. So hopefully next Thursday to 17th, we're going to look at the list, narrow it down. We're doing it as a council and mayor, not individual, one person making decisions for the future of our police chief. And lastly, Sally, I don't know if you looked at her report, that this year, 2021, probably, matter of fact, it is, the most permits ever issued in Bristol Borough. There were 697 permits issued. A lot of them came from the development on the river and the book company, Mill Run, for a total of $767,946. So, I mean, I look at stuff like that because I like to see who's pulling permits and who's not pulling permits. But 697 permits is astronomical. And you got to give Sally and the girls that work here a lot of credit for producing that many permits in a small town like this. I mean, it's all, it's a lot of work. So they deserve a lot of credit for how hard they worked to get these permits out and reviewing things and zoning and all the things that takes place. So again, it was, it was a pretty good year of '21, and hopefully we continue in '22. I think I talked long enough. Lorraine, what do you have? You've been quiet tonight, Lorraine. I'm shocked.
Don't need a targanizer.
I just wanted to talk about, there were, there's a few, not a few, but there's several potholes in town. And I called about one on Pond Street that's near Lincoln Avenue. And Kevin assured me that they would begin filling them this week. So I'm thankful for that. And we've been having trouble with the trains idling on, near, I mean, on Trenton Road. So Trenton... Oh my God. On Trenton Avenue. So we reached out to Fitzpatrick and we're kind of going to have a discussion with him about it. And I'd also, I want to thank Alan Hankins and First Compassion for the people of Bristol. I happened to work with him one night delivering Christmas presents. And he, you know, he, he has some bad knees and he ran around like a nut. He's a really good guy, and I want to thank him. That's it.
About the potholes, since they are on Pond Street and they are my ward.
Of course.
The borough, the borough did come in on overtime. Mr. Crotrochi went and opened up his lumberyard and get some cold patch for us. Nobody talks about doing things like that. But he was nice enough to go open the lumberyard, get our guys' cold patch. They put it in. The problem is right now the plants aren't making a lot of patch right now. So that section needs to be milled and overlayed. And it's something that Jim's going to get a proposal together. He's working with Gilmore to see what we need to do. And Pond Street, you got to understand, the whole road is cement. So when water infiltrates the sea, through the blacktop, it freezes. And when it freezes, it moves this slabs of cement, and that's where you're getting all this cracking from. If you could take out the cement that's on the road, it'll be astronomical. It would cost a lot of money to do. You would have a lot better road, correct? Kurt? So they're going to look at it. I don't know if there's any new methods out there. Today, they contacted a company, I don't know if you've ever seen the truck, where the, the arm is out front, it blows out the hole that, and they could fill it with that. So we're doing everything we can to stay on top. But if there is a pothole, please call the borough and report it, no matter what ward it is.
Even if it's in your ward?
Even if it's in your ward.
It's in your ward?
Even if it's in your ward, call. Call the borough so that we can get someone out to take care of it.
I have to tell you, the only reason I called was my daughter came home very upset.
Probably teasing you.
Okay.
Greg, what do you have?
Just to build a little bit upon what Lorraine said, just to give people a little history if, if they're new to Trenton Avenue or if they haven't been, you know, if they haven't experienced this for a while. Years back, Lorraine and I and Mr. Giuseppe and Mr. Dillon, we really bugged Congressman Fitzpatrick's office for a long time. You know, trains are one of the few things in a very local community like ours where the federal government has a lot of pull and a lot of say. And so Congressman Fitzpatrick's office was great then, and, and we got involved with them for a while, and things really did slow down for a while. When I say things, I mean, the idling of the trains on Trenton Avenue is happening now, it seems like at all times of day. And it's even pushing way back towards the high school now, where it used to start, you know, moving over the bridge. There's a train yard on the other side of the Green Yard, or Green Lane Bridge. But that train yard seems to have just kind of moved down into Trenton Avenue. And that is not to say that I'm not sympathetic to the job that the guys have there. It's a tough job. They're working all hours of the day and night. But, you know, the old saying about the railroads is that they were there first. But I don't know if that's actually true for some...
I'm sure they weren't.
We've been here for a very long time. So...
Boots first.
So Congressman Fitzpatrick's office is aware again, and they have been very responsive again. They're going to try to organize some things to see what we can do. And I, I guess this will just be a pattern where hopefully we can go to be at least aware that they're dead smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood for some time. And if we have to keep, keep doing it, then we will. And then that, that also brings me to something that I've been railing on for a very long time. And Mr. Dillon brought up the idea of this, you know, of the flood study on that Green Lane Bridge, which is not just an eyesore, it just doesn't, there's just so many things that seem wrong with that. I'll wait till that goes up. There just seems to be so many things that are, that are wrong with that bridge that, that hopefully we can kind of get locked in on that. And this is also speaking to the job that Mr. Dillon and our engineers do. I know I'm putting the, you know, I'm, I'm kind of jumping ahead here, but obviously that infrastructure bill that was just passed, I know the guidance is starting to come out on those things. I know it's a five to seven-year process for some of that money, but it's, it seems like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity with the amount of money that's going to be out there for projects like this. By the way, a lot of river stuff is on there too, a lot of recreation stuff. So I just, I know they will stay on top of it. I know Mr. Dillon will stay on top of it. But I would look forward to us really kind of looking at what kind of money could be available because we're in Old Town. And if it's an infrastructure bill, I mean, you know, infrastructure should start with the oldest places, I think. The, the other thing I would, I would like to say is, you know, with the last two and a half years being what they are, I was, I was talking to Mr. Lolly, who put together, you know, the monument. And he was politely expressing a little frustration that there hasn't been a lot of discussion of the monument in front of, in front of Phinney McGee's, the veterans memorial, excuse me, in front of Phinney McGee's there. Still beautiful. They still do a great job of trying to keep it up and trying to maintain it. And so I would encourage people to visit it, visit it. It still looks really good. And I'm wondering if maybe we could get even, I, I could take a few cell phone pictures or if Matt could take a picture of, and maybe... if Matt could take a picture and maybe just have a picture streaming on the TV channel with anything else that we have streaming by there if possible. I think they would appreciate that. If that's a possibility. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right. You're up, buddy. What do you got, Brian?
I was wondering about like the Mill Street parking lot. Is there going to be any like bathrooms or anything down there or are we still going to have?
Still have the porta potties. We looked into where we could put a building up and with the flooding and all, it's pretty hard. Not that it's ever out of the question, if we can raise some money someday to put it in, but right now we're still with the porta potties.
That was it.
Where are you at?
I really don't have anything. I've been working with Mr. Dillon with anything that has come across, any complaints that have come across, I've been working with Mr. Dillon. So, and, you know, everything's been going well, so.
Louie?
That's good news.
First, I'd like to welcome Brian on board. Unfortunately, I was sick the meeting he was sworn in and he was sick the next meeting. So we're having our first meeting together and welcome aboard. And I'd like to thank the borough crew and the borough staff for the great job they did with the snow plowing. This was a very difficult storm and the guys really did a good job. I know there was some, you know, you always get somebody who has negative comments and they should have to ride in the snowplow, not even drive the truck, just ride in the snowplow and you can see how difficult that is. And this one was crazy because there was so much snow and it was so light and blowing around, you plowed and it covered back over again, but they really did a nice job. And I want to thank Kevin and Rob Mellings and Steve Wade. There was a sewer blockage on Rackliff Street on Thursday and it was all the way down, you know, I noticed it at my house that things weren't flowing right, but the blockage was all the way down on Mulberry Street, but those guys went down and did a great job. And I think, you know, it's an old sewer, so there's some dips in it and whatnot and the cold weather and grease buildup, but they did a great job. So I wanted to thank them and recognize them for their hard work. And Kevin's really doing a good job coordinating things with the crew. Lower Bucks Hospital still has the vaccines open Thursdays. You can call ahead for the boosters or the regular vaccines. They also do walk-ins, but then you're, you know, you have to make sure they have enough vaccine when you do go in. But if you call their number, you know, they'll reserve you a spot. And the last thing is, last month Bob Harvey was featured on as part of a report that the Sunday Morning Show on CBS was doing and they were talking about the elections and different issues and they interviewed Mr. Free Tag, who's the borough, the county's, he's handling the electoral process and they interviewed Bob Harvey. Of course, we all consider him a Bristolian and here he is, he's our county commissioner, but he did a great job on national news and I really would like to, you know, congratulate him on such a good job. That's all.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes, I just want to echo what Councilman Crottochi said about the public works. They're always stepped up to the plate, you know, the taking care of our little tight little town, how they keep things flowing, especially with the snow and have gone, are out there all hours of the evening, even pre treating it when is possible. So I always like to thank Kevin and those guys. They do a great job. The other thing is that in Councilwoman Betty Rodriguez and I, we'd like to thank, there's so many things in town that it's impossible for the two of us to see all the time. So we really have been thanking people and encouraging them, if there is something, to reach out to us first and then we direct it to Mr. Dillon via email and copy. And so I'd like to thank them for also being our set of eyes because there are some things that we may not see or are not always aware of on a daily basis. And again, thank Mr. Dillon and John and the staff for addressing these things and are helping us to direct what department we should go to to correct some of these issues. So I just wanted to let everyone that's watching know that it has been addressed and hopefully things will be taken care of by the appropriate department. With that in mind, I just have one thing there with the congratulations on all the permits, especially in our ward, we see that there's a lot of, in the west ward, a lot of things going on with Mill Street and on Bath Street. Mr. Dillon, is there, I know that Sally and the staff always say, you know, when you get your permit to display it, is there something that perhaps, and Betty had brought this up, it was a good suggestion, that maybe we could add to the packet that says, make sure you display it? Because a lot of the things that we went out on and calls and stuff, the permits were issued, but they weren't properly displayed. So maybe that's something we could just ask. I don't know what the solution would be, but if there is something.
Mara is taking minutes because she has a funeral today and I'm sure she'll have it resolved by 8:15 tomorrow.
Exactly. They're great and just the girls are wonderful, so. And that's it. Thank you.
Before we get into this other meeting, just to bring everybody up on recreation, we have formed a recreation committee with the borough and the school district. I'm going to be scheduling a meeting next week with that committee. I know we have a meeting Thursday. I might do something Wednesday night to figure out how we're going to move forward with 2022 recreation for the town. And it's not only just for sports, it's for everything. You know, there might be some other programs and I want to invite Mike Loblawski, who is our athletic director, and Stacy Dragon, who is from Little, Bristol Borough, Little Lake to this meeting. And there's a couple of other people we might want to get involved, so I don't want to mention their names in case they don't want to get involved. But we're going to move forward with how we're going to proceed in '22 and there's some other issues that we're dealing with. The last thing I want to bring up is if you come down Mill Street to the stop sign, and I had Michael and Betty out looking at this, right at the stop sign, when you go left to go around the King George, it's like a, for some reason, it's a dark spot and you have a hard time seeing people coming up the hill and crossing this way. If they're crossing from the Cantina, you notice that person for some reason.
Coming the other way, yeah.
So we looked at this intersection and we're looking at maybe putting some kind of overhead light right on that corner of the King George or some way to light up that section. So again, we'll keep you posted. I was supposed to meet Kevin again out there, but we didn't have time, but I know Michael and Betty are interested in correcting this problem.
And you know what, Ralph, also maybe we could do, there's a really dark spot at Woody Market by the firehouse. I always, I'm looking up to see, oh, maybe a bulb's out, but there's, that's also a really dark.
Right.
And a lot of times that, so maybe we can look at that as well.
If there's a street light out somewhere in town, please report it. I know it's, you see it go on and off or they're just off. We pay for that light, whether it's on or off. We really want to make sure these lights are on. So if you get a chance, please report that light and something just went out of my mind. Oh, Mill and I think it's Pond, there's always a big puddle. We are addressing that issue too. They're either looking at putting a drain in to get it over to the inlet because the street is higher and lower and there's just this little lake that freezes. So that's being looked at too, so in case anybody wants to know. All right. So there's no public participation, so we'll end that again because we didn't have in the beginning. So we'll go to number three. Joe, you don't have anything to add?
President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes for December 13th of 2021 and January 3rd of 2022, accept the treasurer's report for November and December of 2021, accept the police and media report for December 2021 and January 2022, accept the public work report for December 2021 and January 2022, accept the inspection report for November 2021, December 2021 and January 2022, and accept the fire chief's report for November 2021, December 2021, January 2022, and accept the hard report for January of 2022.
Second by Lorraine. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the contract with Axon Enterprise Inc. for TASER replacement for the police department per Sergeant Joe Moore's OIC memorandum dated January 26, 2022.
Second by Mr. Crottochi. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number five.
President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a new animal control vehicle of 2022 Transit Connect Cargo Van in the amount of $27,910 per Sergeant Joe Moore's OIC memorandum dated January 25, 2022.
Second by Mr. Gorman. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to authorize three-year agreement with Leo Polinsky Jr. to maintain the athletic fields on Jefferson Avenue and the Otter Street fields at the annual fee of $12,000.
Second by Mr. Crottochi. Questions or comments? I'd just like to make one comment and I don't want to rehash old business, but there was a lawsuit filed about almost three years ago, not only against the borough, against five council people personally, by Councilman Gerard and by Councilman Riccio, who both are no longer with us. But about, I don't know, six months or eight months ago, that that ruling finally came down after continuing, pushing this issue and we were all found not guilty and everything was done the right way. So nobody ever came in here and apologized, nobody ever came in here and said, we filed a frivolous lawsuit and, like I said, I'm not trying to rehash things, but we knew from the beginning, when our solicitor tells us something and we had a second solicitor tell us something, that we felt very confident in the way we voted on something, that we were 150% right, not 100% right. So Mr. Pezz, myself, Mr. Crottochi, Michael?
No, Betty. Betty.
Was sued personally by these two councilmen and their lawyer that they use. So again, nothing was done wrong. Of course, the insurance company, our insurance company, probably about $25,000 of fees to fight. Mr. Dillon said it cost our insurance company about $25,000 to fight this case.
Who was the lawyer?
You know, it's very easy to settle something, but when you know you're right, it's principle and we knew we were right. And that's why we're awarding the same contract again for the same amount and for the same term.
And he does a great job.
On top of that, he's doing sports all the way into November, which had no increase in anything. So he does a great job. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to table the motion for the approval of BB and T tax appeal for 200 Radcliffe Street based upon the valuations proposed by the borough solicitor.
So there's a table. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay.
President, I'd like to make a motion for approval of Bristol Borough Mill Street lighting panel upgrades by G and G Electrical Construction in the amount of $24,059.38, period.
Second by Mr. Crottochi. Questions or comments? So we got a motion by Mr. Pezz, a second by Mr. Crottochi. Any other, I did that for Mara in case you didn't hear it. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of agreement with County Bristol Township, Tullytown Borough and Bristol Borough for the county co-responder joint program.
Second by Mr. Crottochi. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the designation of agent resolution be resolved at council of Bristol Borough that James Dillon, the borough manager, is hereby authorized to execute for and in behalf of Bristol Borough.
Do I have to continue to read more of that? Okay. That's it.
Second by Mr. Pezz. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Is that the one for the flood study?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second by Mr. Crottochi. All in favor?
Aye.
Please adjourn.